Call this meeting to order with the board and guests, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, now can supervisor Clark?
Present.
Treasurer Fito was here, trustee Bowen.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Present.
Trustee Cusgrove.
Present.
Trustee Mohico.
Here.
You have a call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I move to adjust the agenda and move the manager's report to the local committee of the whole continued, but we do it at the last other than when we have so much before us. Is there a second?
Support.
All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carries. With that, Connie. Excuse me, first a public comment.
Public comment.
Anyone here speak on any item on or off the agenda? Seeing none?
No, there is none.
Yhab is here. Needs to go. Would you like to go to the mic?
I'm David Howell, live at ninety-four eighty-seven Guinea Road. I can tell from looking at the agenda that a tremendous amount of work has gone into the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. But a couple of things stand out to me. One of them is the nine and a half percent increase in the sewage fees. In addition to that, a three percent increase in the water fees. And in addition to that, a sixty-two percent increase in property taxes. You add up those numbers there, comes to almost twenty percent. And that it, that doesn't even count, you know, an average family dealing with the, the price increases for food and energy and, and housing. So I'm not sure that the budget as proposed is sustainable for most of the people in Delta Township. I also have a question, and I don't know if anyone can answer this, or if I should talk to someone in the engineering department. But in terms of revenues for the water department, is it being factored in in terms of the water that the Ultium Three plant is going to be using? Are they using their own well to bring up the water, or are they going to be getting the water from the Delta Township Water Tower? And if so, I'm curious as to whether or not that was factored in because if you've looked at some of the media reports, there are some doubts in the media on whether or not that plant is ever going to get up to full production. I also had a question about the eighteen percent increase in life health and disability insurance premiums for the employees here. And that's quite a large increase, and I'm just wondering if you're locked into one provider or if you have flexibility to, you know, to put out bids with other life insurance providers. And finally, the projected amount that the township is going to be paying here for the bank intercounty drain project. In the paperwork, it said at five hundred thousand. If you take the sixty million estimated cost of the project over thirty years, subtract five million, which is the state's input, you have fifty-five million. Ninety-five percent of that is going to be Eaton County Slant Delta Township, which comes to fifty-two point two five million dollars. If you divide, Delta Township's public benefit assessment is twenty-five percent of that. So it actually comes out to around four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So, so it looks to me like the five hundred thousand that's being budgeted, you know, has, has quite a cushion. So I just hope that, you know, in, in time, if you have time to go through and pick through the budget, just, you know, consider it from a, you know, from an average citizen in Delta Township standpoint in terms of these budgetary increases. Because that, it's probably pretty rare that anybody has a twenty, twenty-five percent, you know, wage increase in a year. And they may also be dealing with the three mil increase from Eaton County if that, if that passes in November. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others for public comment? Seeing none. Connie.
Oh, I thought you.
You do have a comment? Okay. So you have received questions from board members and you've done responses. So is there anything that you would like to elaborate on before?
Uh, no, actually.
You don't?
I was, I was just gonna introduce myself. I think everyone here knows me. I'm Brandon Haskell, Eaton County Commissioner, District Four, just east of here. I understand that the questions have been answered and submitted back, so everyone has had a chance to see those, correct? Okay. But then we have Connie, Melissa, and Ben here from Eaton County staff that would be happy to elaborate more on any of the questions you might have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for last week inviting us here today and those of you who attended the town hall. I think probably the largest question that this board has is in relationship to the Delta Police Contract. That, that's really the biggest thing that we share, and it's the most positive thing, I think, for all of Eaton County residents. And I think I said it at a couple of board meetings. Delta Township is in Eaton County and Eaton County residents utilize Delta Township. So we're all clear on that. We're all the same. With, with respect to the contract and in terms of the cost, yes, the MERS pension costs have gone up. As the gentleman spoke before, related to costs of, of doing business and paying for wage increases and benefits, they go up. Eaton County has been unique in relationship to MERS, just given the fact that we had a large benefit. I think most of you know it was a three point two percent multiplier. That was the highest. That was for police services, which is where the cost hit you. We reduced that to a two, and we've reduced all other employees as well to a two. And I think that shows that we're making strides. The difficulty is the county cannot change what MERS does with their valuations toward the cost of the pension. We're forced to pay what they tell us to pay. So the big question, if I were you sitting here, that I would ask is, what is the county going to do? And we did get this question, but I would have asked it anyway. What is the county going to do to make things better if we have a police services contract and this three mils go through? I can tell you, under administration and from conversations that I've had with your township manager, that we would look at making strides to improve what we're funding. If, if I had a million dollars every year, we would have been putting money toward the pension. For you, it's applicable and most important that we would apply it to the sheriff command and sheriff non-supervisory unit. So that's a commitment that I would make. Now, I have three board members who might not be happy with the fact that I said that, but I would commit to working on that because that's fiscally responsible for all of us. If we're going to get money, we should be paying toward our pension obligation. And we also want the state to make changes. So that's the commitment. The benefit has always been, I think, positive for the county since I've been here. I came here in eighty-eight. I know the contract was here in eighty-three. I know that your township manager and I would be working on this contract together. It would be the first time. So you've got a fresh set of eyes. We both looked at it already. We both have ideas. One of the things I can say again to my board members, don't listen, but you have positions that you pay for that are one hundred percent paid for by the township. That result, that was the result of the need for additional, additional positions several years ago. So we've kept those in as a hundred percent. Does it need to be that way today? Yes. Would it need to be that way if this three mil went through, three mils went through? Not necessarily. Can I say that a board would make that change? I can't. Can I say that your board would come to me and say, make that change? I'm pretty certain you would. So the commitment from people standing here is to make sure that we can come up with a contract that suits what you need and what we need because we're a team. Right? So that's the goal. I think that's the largest thing and the biggest problem that I think we have when we're talking about this, this millage, is the fact that you want to know what you're going to get. We've had a great relationship over the years. You don't want to go out for creating your own police force or trying to contract with anyone else. We don't want you to do that either. And we have a good system in place. Our sheriff's deputies are top-notch, command the sheriffs committed to Delta Township. So that's the thing that I wanted to make sure we talked about here, that I talked about here. If you have questions related to anything additional that we responded to, if it's simple, we can answer it here. If it's not, we can provide more information. The other thing that we're going to do, if it's okay with you, we want to post the questions that you asked us on our FAQ page. So that not only your residents, but all of Eaton County understand what your concerns are. You can do the same. You could post that on yours so your residents know that you're specifically looking at their interests. So I don't know if you have other questions. I don't know if the two of you don't pop long, if you have something to say. But if you have other questions that you want to ask right now.
Does anyone have an additional question?
I don't actually have a question, but just a comment one. I want to thank you for the responses, I think really helpful because there have been, I know I've been receiving a lot of questions from members of the community. So, you know, I was conveying questions. I was receiving questions I had and wasn't seeing answers to, to help inform our residents. Folks are trying to make decisions about these, you know, they're important decisions, and it's really helpful, and I appreciate the kind of transparency and adding those to the, your FA, FAQ page just to help. Because we, you know, and I imagine for my colleagues on the board, they've been getting questions as well, and that's kind of what's generated a lot of, of what they submitted. So I think that's really helpful and appreciate your comments this evening and, again, all the work that was put into, to help answer questions that we posed in advance.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. Brian, our contract was extended for a year, our Delta Patrol contract. When is that up?
Nine thirty twenty-five.
I'm sorry, what?
September thirty of twenty-five.
So a year from now.
Correct.
Right, okay. So if the millage passes, you'll have time to assess what the finances that you have, the revenues you have, and be able to come to us. And we'd be able to sit down and negotiate a new contract.
Yes.
Based on those increased revenues.
Yes.
If the millage fails, you will have time to assess what your budget is and what sort of cutbacks you'll have to make, and you'll be able to come to the township and would have an opportunity to negotiate our contract based on that circumstance. Is that correct?
Yes. Now, we said it before, if the millage does not pass for administration and discussion with board members, our board chair and the sheriff, we would have no ability to have a contract.
So we're giving you four million dollars. We're getting a credit of two million dollars for the five point five SEV credit. So the six million dollars are given you. You're saying you would, you would just take that two million dollars and say, we don't want your four million dollars, and we're going to go ahead and lay off Delta Patrol sheriffs?
Can I, can I butt in?
Don't say anything incorrect.
So I'd like to correct that misinterpretation. So we do not receive six million dollars from Delta Township for the police services contract. We only receive four million dollars from that contract. That is what is in the negotiated contract. That's the monthly, or that's annualized through the contract. And monthly, you pay three hundred and forty thousand dollars on that. So that is the contract amount. The SEV credit that you're talking about is actually a reduction in the contract total price. So we look at it and say, hey, you know, Delta Township is a large part of Eaton County. So because of that, we would likely have some sort of presence here. So we're going to reduce the total that Delta Township owes for that. So the total cost of the Delta Township contract for the department cost is five point six million. So that's where those two totals come from. So we're reducing it by the two million dollars for that credit, which is thirty-six percent this year. So that's where those two numbers come from. It would only be, unfortunately, we're not going to do the Delta Township contract anymore. We would reduce our revenues by the four point eight million dol, or four point oh eight million dollars. And then we would also reduce our expenses.
Well, I don't want to get into details here because these discussions we have offline, but I appreciate your, your myopic viewpoint of that it's your revenue, even though it's coming from Delta Township as an SEV credit, as well as all the other revenue that is allocated out to the other general funded departments as well. I understand that. But we would still have an opportunity to pay you four million or more for Delta Patrol if you desired, if it were failed. But we can have those discussions based on whatever the outcome of the election is. Thank you very much.
And four point oh eight plus two point oh five still does not equal five point six one. Can you explain that?
Yes, there is a, there is a formula on our, in our budget, and I have it right in front of me right now. I'd be happy to go through that line by line with you. But a big portion of that is a fifteen percent fee. So there's a support service fee for it.
And that's part of the two point oh five million?
Um, the two point oh five million is the reduction of the total. So we end up with the five point six as the total departmental costs, and then we reduce it by the two million. So you're not paying the two million.
Okay.
Because then we add back in the non-formulary officers.
So the four million covers that administrative fee?
Correct.
Okay, I see now. Okay. And the other question I have is, does, does the county have a specific ask of this board? Or are you simply here to inform us about the tax limitations?
Just here to inform you.
Okay.
I, I believe the county at one of the other meetings indicated they would, were hoping that we would vote to support the millage. But we haven't discussed that.
I said in my comments last week that we would certainly appreciate your vote in November, but we would also appreciate your support. Thank you.
Andrea.
If I may ask one question.
Thanks, Joe.
I know I had posed just asking and trying to understand because it was shared, the three mil increase, if that full amount was exercised, would be additional twelve million annually for the county. And I'm just trying to understand too what those needs were. And I know it escalates with the MERS applications. And I don't recall, but I was, and I apologize, I was in meetings all day, so I only had a few minutes before to review your comment. I, I know that, I think it was about seven million in some of the other costs, infrastructure, technology, and then some of your infrastructure needs. I don't recall what MERS was, but it sounds like there's pretty much an immediate need for the twelve million. Am I?
That, that is correct.
Yeah. So I, I realize in, as staff and, and even for those who are elected officials, those are annual decisions.
Correct.
Can't make, you know, commit kind of what future boards will decide each year. But is, I just wanted to make sure my kind of estimation was, I think probably the needs exceed the twelve million.
That's true. So if, when we do our budget recommendation, just like your township manager does, he's going to tell you what the needs are. So when we as staff go to the board with the budget, we're going to say, we need the twelve million. That, that means the board would levy the three. It is up to, and we have a fifteen-member board, to make that decision. So as staff, we're going to do what's fiscally responsible, and to start, it's definitely going to be to ask them to levy the full three.
I appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
Wonder, did you have a question?
No, I don't. They answered my questions via email. Thank you.
I'm good. They, they answer online too.
Okay. Brian, you have a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. That leads us to our budgets. And is Courtney presenting, you presenting? Thank you.
It says it's on. No, I, I can see mine, so. If you guys can see.
We can see this.
All right. Audience can't see it.
Yeah.
Tell me it's busy. It should, it should fire up here and just.
Oh, wait, I have a quick question. In regards to what the gentleman in public comments said about the six point two increase in taxable value, that's market value going up and taxable value adjusted for market value of property prices. Is that correct?
So if you didn't sell, purchase, if you didn't purchase your home and you just get your bill like you get every year, your bill went up five percent. Our taxable value of the township went up six point two percent because of addition and new growth. So yeah, the homeowners only went up, homeowners businesses, five percent.
But that's not something that township levied or changed?
No, that's statewide.
Exactly, yes.
Statewide, yeah.
So just information.
So because of, of new growth, it really went up for us over six percent.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead or?
Thank you. I think go ahead.
Go.
Yeah.
Okay. And so thank you. Welcome. I can't believe it's already, I think, my fourth, fifth budget presentation, Boarding of Finals Finance Director Deputy Treasurer. So we'll just review our recommendations for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and I can address as we go along with the citizen comments without any issue. I wrote them down. So we prepare this in accordance with the Michigan Uniform Accounting and Budgeting Act, also with the keeping in mind the Township Strategic Plan, continuing to provide high quality service to our residents, and doing those things that keep Delta Township an excellent place to live, work, and play. Some of the general goals and priorities for twenty twenty-five include planning for future capital and infrastructure needs, which it seems like we're always doing and we will continue to do. Maintaining excellent water and sewer services, continuing to fund our OPAB liabilities and our pension liabilities, there we go, and addressing, like I said, goals in the strategic plan, and your board policy of maintaining fifty percent unassigned fund balance in the general fund. So just to review our employee-related long-term liabilities, we have a defined benefit pension that covers our firefighters. The most recent valuation was at the end of December twenty twenty-three. Our current funded percentage is about seventy-three percent based on MERS's calculations. So we are required to make our annual required contribution each year is determined by MERS, and so that's included. This year, it's about eighteen percent of salary. Again, that's just for the firefighters. We also have retiring healthcare benefits that we do based on years of service. As of our most recent valuation, it was a hundred and twenty percent funded, so obviously doing very well there. That is not smooth like MERS is smooth. So MERS works on a five-year smoothing, so market goes up, market goes down, they kind of pick a middle. Our OPAB actuarial does not do that. So if you can have a really great market year like we did, and it gets to a hundred and twenty percent, but if the market falls, it, it could go down under a hundred percent. So it is a little bit more volatile than MERS, but still obviously in excellent shape. We're not required to make contributions to that plan except for, for employees hired after June of twenty eighteen. But that's, and so, but we do make an annual contribution. We will still make our annual contribution despite being a hundred percent funded, because again, the volatility could change that. This is a chart, assessing provides for me each year, showing the increasing gap between the taxable value and the assessed value. So as we all know, assessed value of homes has climbed considerably after the pandemic with the value, the decrease in housing stock. And taxable value was capped by the rate of inflation of five percent, which for the past two years has been the five percent. But you can see the considerable gap that continues to grow between housing values and our taxable value. This is also assessing grant on the taxable value change by property class. So you can see commercial property change, industrial, just kind of a nice summary of where the growth comes from. Personal property continues to decline, mostly because of the small parcel exemptions, which was expanded this year to go up to, I think it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in property, so that you will see continuing to decline. Local operating milledges, so this is updated through the most recent milledges that people have published. So despite our two new milledges, we still fall very low in the surrounding town, compared to the surrounding townships and cities. The, and you guys adopted the L twenty twenty-nine last week. We were able to lower the sheriff substation dot millage, I think it was nine point eight, now it's nine point two, or point nine two. So that should go down every year as the taxable value goes up. So that's nice to be able to do. General fund revenue summary, it's all pretty stable. Revenue sharing is supposed to go down a little bit. That is dependent, obviously, on state sales tax receipts. Grant funding is high in twenty twenty-five, when I was making the list. That it did get a lot of parks projects that we received funding, the housing grant, because we're not really sure how much will get spent this year and how much will get spent next year. And then the mall, I have an Elwood grants, which may end up getting pushed a year. That project may get delayed a year, so we may be stripping that out on the final version of this, but that is a big chunk of the grant funding. But yeah, other than that, pretty, pretty stable. The one thing I did point out, my mama was the telecommunication act, the cable fees. It's been interesting to watch those sort of dwindle over time as more people cut the cord. So we do receive that check quarterly, and it has started to really be noticeably declining. We just don't see the revenue from that that we used to. The expenditure summary, a few things you can find out of the clerk's office, we just had budgeted for one election. I mean, maybe we could do that. That would be nice to get a little bit of a break. But we figured we usually have one, so we included that. Um IT is lower because the S and A cloud. We're done with that, so to speak, at least paying for it. Um accounting treasurer is higher because the St. Joe bond payment is in there now. Um so that is higher. Hauling grounds, we have money budgeted for paving the parking lot, uh which is was well needed. Police activity is higher because eleven percent increase in the sheriff's contract for next year. Um fire, we have less capital expense, so that's why that's lower. Um to address the drain, so I did use a five hundred thousand dollar estimate, there's going to be substantial interest cost on a thirty year bond issue. So um that's why I use the five hundred thousand. I will be lucky if it's five hundred thousand, in my opinion, with the way that you know, the design is progressing and all that. I I think we'll be getting off light if it's five hundred thousand. Roads activity is up because of the mall, I've an Elwood pass that we have included and cemetery has a capital project.
Right, if I may, Madam Clerk, uh on the um the bank's drain. So is it the Eaton County Drain Office that issues the bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will be a party to that. So you know how when we did the Bel Air Drain, we had to pass that resolution saying we would participate because we're a big chunk of the project. We'll have to do that again, but yes, they will be Eaton County Drain Bonds.
And you mentioned the substantial interest cost. Is that just open market interest in the bond sales or is that some other subsidized?
It is. They sell on the open market and they're not as, because I asked this question because I noticed the interest rates that drains were getting were nowhere near the three percent we're get. And I think there's not as much. Even though to me the drain is one of the most stable things, because they just put it on your taxes, right? They sell the bond, they put it on your taxes. But the drains aren't just as like well known in like the bond societies, so they just they don't get the interest rates that we get. Um so it'll be in the five, six. Yeah, it's considerably different.
Yeah, okay.
So general funds, fund balance, this budget does call for using fund balance. Part of that will come from some money that we won't spend this year because we've delayed some projects, um a couple of the parks projects who are just going to finish design. We're not going to finish construction, but it still leaves us with over eight months of um fund balance, so not a not a problem. We did budget to put that five hundred thousand dollars into the restricted drain account that we already had. So it's adding to our restricted or assigned fund balance. It just kind of gives us a cushion um if we end up running into a problem over the thirty years we're paying on this. So some of this I touched on. Um so yeah, we'd be using about two point nine million fund balance. Like I said, that's a big number. It's all for capital projects. Um part of it's that five hundred thousand that we would basically be putting aside for the bond, for the bank drain. And then we will have reserves at the end of this year that we would be using to offset that. But it meets all the board policies. Uh we did have the three percent cost of living for non union and three percent is a part of our CVA for the fire department. So the healthcare cost increases eighteen percent. That is the healthcare cost increase. That's the huge driver, the life and the dental. And that is extremely minor. We did meet with our healthcare representative and yes, he always does seek other proposals for other plans. Just to QA QC and try to have lever and jump blue cross to see if there's anything else we can do. Not a lot of players in that market, unfortunately, um priority PHP. But yes, they they do seek out bids and the board will approve that um probably in October, November. The Eaton County Sheriff Contract does get paid out of the general fund and the Public Safety Fund now because the Public Safety Millage covers the cost of, well, I forget what I said in the memo, but a certain percentage of that contract, one point nine million of that contract is covered through the Public Safety Millage.
Yeah, I have a question. In light of this new drain assessment that we're going to have to start putting aside half million dollars every year for for the next thirty years. It, should we be considering perhaps postponing some of these parks projects? Even though I know we're doing matching grant funds and we might lose some of the grant funding, but perhaps if we postpone some of them, we could save up the money and pay it later.
So I included the five hundred thousand dollars. So when I do the budget, right, I think of operating expense and capital expense. The operating expense, the five hundred thousand would be an operating expense to me because it's annual. It's not a one time cost. So the five hundred thousand is actually covered by our operating expense, our ongoing. It's not, we're not dipping into reserve to put that aside right now. So.
But we are for the parks project?
Correct, because those are one time projects. So you wouldn't want to use reserve for something that you were going to have ongoing. And right now, we're not doing that. So the only thing that we're doing for the only thing that we're using reserve for our capital projects.
But not health and safety so much as just, you know, fun things and things we want to add and that sort of thing, but we're not.
Right. I mean, there are some fire department projects as well, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying parks and rec. Yeah, but that's not health and safety. That's not making sure that that, you know, we're saving lives or anything like that. These are things that we want to add to the township, which of course we want to do. But perhaps we can't financially do right now.
That would be the.
But the purpose of our reserves is for this.
Because you, the, right, so you would use your reserve because you save up for things that you.
That's how we have.
So this is capital reserve, not general fund reserve?
It's unrestricted general fund reserve above and beyond the amount that we need for that fifty percent of fund balance. Yeah.
When she said we were, what you said, we were at sixty some percent?
Yeah, it's basically eight months and the board policy is six.
Well, policy calls for six months.
Right, but right now, that's, but that's the cushion.
Right.
That you're talking about.
But then with the, you know, this does take into account the new millage. So I mean, at some point, yeah, it does get more difficult to do the capital projects because if you use the reserve and you don't replenish the reserve, then yes.
I I think one of the things that uh kind of hurts in the budget is we're still dealing with the backlog, a queue all the way from COVID with some of our parks projects. So um many of these have already been deferred a year, two, three. So uh trying to clear those out of the deck and certainly um moving forward, careful about applying for new grants or or projects. But it would be ideal to try to get some of these done, um that we do have grant funding uh waiting to be able to add those amenities.
And I was pleased to see in the CIP that, you know, perhaps we will have a slower year.
Project wise. Right, well, so the basically the big ones for next year, which I don't know where am I at here? I guess I'll get there in two slides, right? So this was a few things I already commented on. Oh, the fire department does have an increased um position to take the suppression staff. So we had budgeted two extra positions last year to deal with the retirements that were coming. And so we're just making those permanent and adding one to put fifteen on a shift for forty five suppression personnel. Um and then, so these are the capital projects that are included in that budget. So you know, the Hunter's Orchard, Hunter Hunter's Orchard and the Sharp Park, I think those were twenty nineteen grant projects. I mean, that had been, yeah, it was so, had they been happening in sort of the order that we intended, it wouldn't be happening all at the same time.
And and just to remind, some of those really were held up by COVID because we waited. Usually, once you get the grant, you still wait almost a year for a project grant agreement. I believe we waited almost two years for those and and we dealt with the um escalation of costs. So another issue to deal with and the manpower and and some of the projects, if you remember, we put out for bid and I get good bids. So we're we're back into now being able to accomplish a few of these projects. And as I say, hopefully clear the deck from some of these older grants, uh because we prefer not to re- re- return them. We don't want to risk future grants, uh at least finish off uh these these projects moving forward.
So some of them we have been saving for five years.
Yeah, and like I said, we thought maybe we would get to them this year, but it just, you know, we just focused on the design this year. But fifty percent of the operating budget is personnel related. I mean, personnel is, you know, your big cost driver, but it is good that we can still afford to do these projects. Um some of the ties to the strategic goals. Um grant matching for Hunter's Orchard, Sharp Park, um the Sharp Park Playground, which is partially funded by a county grant. And then the Webster Road Bridge design, which is also funded by a county grant in part. Um fireworks, recycling, parks and right programs, continued non motorized pathway maintenance, because again, you build it and then you do obviously have to keep maintaining it. Our publications remain the same, Delta Rocks all summer long. And then staff development, a lot of these overlap, right? So um and then continued infrastructure and upgrades.
Yes. Just a question, Courtney, on the infrastructure for like the Township Hall. I know uh as part of the strategic planning, we talked about a few years ago, there were things that needed to be done in this building. And so I didn't know if there's anything that's on the list that's imperative that we address in the next budget cycle for the for this building.
Big thing is the parking lot paving. Um it's a good time to do that because I'll be doing administrative drive and the area across the street will be all cleaned up. So that's the main thing um for this building for next year.
Okay. The East Lot is especially bad.
I know it's getting. Other Township Funds, Public Safety Fund, formerly Paramedic or Ambulance Fund. That's stable, budgeted revenue expenditures were equal. Economic Development Capital Projects, we basically will spend all but two hundred and fifty thousand of our ARPA money this year. So the amount in the Capital Projects Fund is kind of what it was originally before we put the ARPA in there. And the General Debt Fund is just the library bond. This is a review of what we spent ARPA funds on, so I think it's been a really great use. Real nice mixture of different departments and different projects. It's a little bit different than um because we didn't end up doing the Sharp Park and the Hunter's Orchard project, so shifted some of that into the Nixon Re Bikeland project, just so we could get it spent this year. Um Delta Mills restroom was a big piece of it. So and two ambulances. We won't get one of the ambulances until twenty twenty five. Future projects to keep in mind, um we still have the Grant to Pave Hawk Meadow Trail. And then the big one and the big commitment the township has made because it's basically a once in a generation project is the Webster Road Bridge. So participating in the bridge project, participating um with the trail connecting Delta Mills to Hawk Meadow. I mean, it's a, it's a big deal, so we do have a lot of grant applications out to cover a very good portion of that. We just haven't had confirmation yet.
Is there any potential for state funding?
It it it, the grants are all. So there's a transportation enhancement grant and then um a trust fund grant, both out for that. So Public Safety Fund, again, not a lot of expenditures this year. We have our annual striker equipment lease payment. That's annual for ten years. And one ambulance, which we ordered in two thousand twenty three, two, you know, I lose track now. But um that will be the last piece of apparatus that um we're expecting. We expect the pumper tanker this fiscal year that we've been waiting on since twenty two. So the sewer fund, um so yes, there is a large increase in the sewer fund. There, that's going to continue to be the increase until at least twenty thirty. So instead of doing a large increase twenty five, thirty percent back years ago, this was the option that we chose, which was the gradual increase. We have a very large bond payment. You can see it now. It hits in twenty twenty five. It keeps me up at night, four point four million dollars to that thing. We're slowly increasing our amount of, but we have to, we're doing the eighty million dollar project and we have to pay for it. There's, there's just no way around it. So the nine point five is kind of where we're landed, that we're slowly increasing the revenue to cover it. So we will use reserve to make this bond payment so that we can gradually increase. Does this factor in Ultium? No.
Right, that's well put, Courtney, too. And we're like, we're now, what, second or third year now of those increases?
Twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah.
And it's, it's good, has to continue until we can make that bond payment without an issue. It's a twenty year bond issue. And yeah, the first payment's in twenty five.
And for the benefit of those in the audience, that bond payment is bond required to construct the new um treatment plant. And that is driven many several years ago.
To go by the state permit limits.
Right, by the state.
That was going to be my question and kind of more for for the earlier question or comments that were made during the public comment period. Those fee increases were all part of that, I guess.
Rate study.
The rate study that was done with the state for the ASRAF loan that was.
Yeah, we committed to this in the ASRAF process to get that bond issue, correct. So with the, like using an average water bill, right, so I use acting supervisor Clark's fill six hundred cubic feet, right? So the bill now would be forty three ten a month. It's going to be forty five fifty one. It's two dollars and forty two cents for the month. So I mean, I get that every little bit, it's very difficult. I pay the water bill too, but unfortunate, I mean, we have low rates. We weren't starting from a Lansing level rate. We're starting from our very low Delta rates, which means that we we just, we do have the room unfortunately to move it. And like I said, two dollars and forty two cents a month is not for an average user. Yeah, but well, I was very careful about Ultium because I know that there are some, I don't know exactly when that's going to come online. So this does not take into account um any extraordinary new revenue from Ultium.
But to clarify that, it was, so assume Ultium goes online as scheduled and they they started using the water and that's coming through Delta Township. So but they're paying their own bill.
Oh, yeah.
And so it's, we're getting our water from the Board of Water and Light. And so it's passing through the um Township's infrastructure, so they get the rates that uh we set. We have set earlier for different types of businesses and things like that.
Ultium actually pays Lansing rates for sewer. And then we keep our portion and permit the rest to Lansing. So they, you know, they pay.
Yeah, yeah, even though it's in a renaissance zone, so.
Correct.
But right, so with Ultium, if they do come on, you know, if that does materialize and they're paying in, then going forward, that could help the township adjust that any future fee increases down some because that we'd have that revenue.
Right.
As well.
That's certainly the hope, but hard to.
Sure. Remember too, that the rate is the rate based on your usage. So, you know, a family of two is going to use less than a family of four is going to use less than a restaurant and that sort of thing. And so, you know, if you're you're using too much, then maybe consider changing your habits.
Yeah, we give the speech every day.
Well, I was just gonna back up just for the purposes of the public or to refresh memories too with the large wastewater plant or worth. Um there was really three things driving it. One, it was at the end of its life cycle. Two, we had reached eighty eighty percent of our capacity, which the state then pushes you into a uh at least looking at redesign. And then the state also was uh uh pushing us into advanced water treatment standards. Um so that uh we still have a phase two for that project uh that will be coming up once phase one is completed. So uh there's a lot of factors that caused that big of a project.
And I'm getting into Rick's world, but enterprise funds, the sewer and the water are separate from general funds.
They have to fund themselves.
Right.
So and you can see we have very limited capital that we're doing in the meantime. We have to upgrade our scale, which is the notification system for problems that's being done as part of the wastewater project or a spurt as part of the wastewater project. But yeah, I mean, we're trying to keep, you know, the other capital to, you know, what we need to do. Um same with water. So we have the St. Joe bond payment, three percent. We have only done one point two five and two percent increases in this because of the higher sewer rate increases. But with the Board of Water and Lights increases being nine percent, we we can't fall behind and get ourselves in trouble. So again, pretty limited capital here and um a lot of, you know, painting the ground, storage tanks, maintenance items. Um but we have to keep up with, you know, a lot of our cost on this is the Board of Water and Light.
Uh and I would just like to say about the water, the water treatment plant, wastewater recovery facility. Sorry. In this community to be able to have these advances. to be able to have these advances, to be able to plan these things out that our utilities department and our engineering department have been looking forward on these things to make sure that we are treating our wastewater and not dumping any kind of environmental contamination into the rivers around here or into our water table. And so, you know, it's one of the things that it's money well spent.
Well, it's under very watchful eye of uh Hurricane Utilities Director. A task to handle. So yeah, that's the last slide. So is there any questions or? Anything else like that?
Um, okay.
Just a couple of questions, easy ones. Um, going over, there was a chart about um the expenses and the percentage of increase or decrease. Two things, the cemetery activity looks like it's going up thirty-two percent. Can you give us kind of an idea of what's going on?
Yep, that's a capital project. We had actually budgeted for this year, but we were just in the design. So that's at the Delta Center Cemetery. So if you go by there, the fence is not it needs a second entrance. So that's a capital project at the cemetery.
And then the other thing, and it came up from during public comment and you spoke a little bit about it, was health insurance. And I know that health insurance is cyclical. You you know, there's a five-year cycle. You may have a couple of good years and a couple of a few years where it's bad. So is that typically, is that what's going on here that's driving up that cost eighteen percent?
Twenty twenty-two had a very low increase of like one or two percent. Well, I always don't like that very much because then I know the next year, right, is gonna be high. So and that was true. In twenty twenty-four, it was high. In twenty twenty-five, unfortunately, it's gonna be high again. What drives that in our case? Utilization. So we're a big, we're a large group, but we're a small, large group. So we might have four people that have fairly catastrophic things that happen to them and it drives up the rate. And it's it's very hard to, I mean, between prescription drugs and then actually um hospital stays, surgeries, those sorts of things. It's it's really driven by utilization and that's just kind of the way, you know, the way that it goes. So they give us a very large, we actually met with Blue Cross this year for the first time because we have over two hundred lives covered. And so they were able to explain, you know, some of the trends and things that we're seeing, but um, but yeah, it is kind of unusual to have sort of the double year, but of the higher increases. But we did have a utilization that was heavy this year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
We're fortunately to have an agent that is very proactive and, like I said, seeking out other quotes, so.
Andrew.
Courtney, excuse me, Courtney, um, you know, we've been really fortunate, I think, one, to be in a strong financial position for many, many years and be able to save up and pay for a lot of improvements and and projects that we've wanted to do. And then I know you know, there were a number of federal kind of COVID era resources that came our way. I think we've capitalized on that opportunity, making really um valuable one-time investments with those with equipment and and other improvements. And we're we're still in a strong position, but are there any things, anything that you're thinking about kind of looking forward, any causes of concern, challenges that, you know, might present in the you know, not so distant future that we need to be cognizant of budget-wise?
Yeah, to me, the bank drain was the big one, and that's why I just wanted to kind of get it out there because I didn't want to budget operating without it because it's gonna hit next year. So and I mean, I don't think there's anything stopping it at this point. So that to me was a really large one. And then, I mean, I think what Trusty Bond was talking about too is that a lot of our millage money is going towards operating expense. It doesn't leave a lot. I think it was about maybe seven hundred thousand that was left over for capital in this budget. So that's where it will be more difficult to raise money for these projects. And we'll just have to be selective of the priorities of the projects. Which I think we have, like I said, I mean, with the Webster Road Bridge, what are you gonna do, right? I mean, you have to do it. And having the reserve, so it's not to say we don't have additional reserve on restricted or restricted reserve. And that's why you have that is so that you can capitalize on that because you wouldn't want a project like that to come along and say, well, we can't help and you can't put the path because we don't have the money, right? So that's why it's important to have those reserves. Um, but I think those, you know, would probably be the the largest things. But I mean, I think, you know, the healthcare cost is another that is a big concern. I mean, for a family plan under with the new rates, it's over thirty thousand dollars a year. So when you multiply that times how many employees you have with families, that's including our HSA contribution, you know, the whole boat. It's a lot. You know, if you have somebody making sixty thousand dollars a year and that's a thirty thousand dollar a year benefit.
Thank you for highlighting those issues.
Yeah.
Beth. Um, you made a point in your uh memo to point out that we spent a lot of money on conferences last year, the board did. And this is not a consideration for you, but perhaps for us going forward, maybe we should um think about a new policy for who goes where, when, you know, and and that sort of thing to cut some of those expenses. I know seventeen thousand dollars is a drop in our overall budget, but just to be responsible with the money that we are spending on behalf of the township.
I I would very much like for the board to have a discussion and consider um what the city of Lansing does, which is each elected person has a line item amount. And we we have to remember all the things that we do. If you make, if you say you're gonna go to the chamber dinner and you don't go, we bought that ticket. And um and so the way the city does, if you want to attend, you have your line item and when your line item is gone, your line item is gone. Um, because this training per se comes differently, but this is not, this is not training. This is for the most part exposure and networking. And not that it's not, not that you don't walk away learning things because you certainly do, but it's not, it's not for certification or things that it's very important that our staff get their training budget because they have to maintain their certifications.
And it was so many years that it really wasn't an issue, right? So it's it's kind of come back after one, three years of COVID when people weren't really, there was nothing in person and.
But proportionally, it kind of exploded last year.
And part of that was a township of excellence. You know, there was a, you know, so a lot of times there is, you know, it's not saying it's not a good reason. It's just understanding what the board wants to do there.
And I would add, I I I think it's always good to look at our expenses and what we do, but I don't want to undermine the value of the training that's out there so that we can continue to um benchmark off of other cities and what they're doing and bring great lessons back to the table. So I think that's what we've been doing, but it's always good to look at how we're spending and and what that places on the budget.
It's still in the budget. It's just how is it going to be allocated?
Right.
And we can have that discussion.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Um, any other questions for Courtney? I think we kind of ask as we went along. And then Courtney, the plan for the timeline for the budget, if you could share that.
So typically how it's worked um is that next meeting, we would set the public hearing for a meeting in October and then have the public hearing and the board can either vote to adopt the budget at that meeting or at a future meeting. It just has to be done you know, by the end of the year. But we typically do it at the latest by the first meeting in November.
Right.
Just so it's set.
Anything other? Beth, did you have anything? No, I couldn't talk to you.
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Court.
So moving on on the agenda, um, I will entertain a motion um to go into closed session at the request of Township Manager under the Open Meetings Act. And the whole MCL is there to consider uh attorney-client privileged communications.
Some of them.
Support. And would you please call roll?
Trusty Bond.
Yes.
Trusty Cascarella.
Yes.
Trusty Brewer.
Yes.
Trusty Mohica.
Yes.
Treasure Fido is a yes. Uh, Madam Clerk, clerk?
Yes.
You have six votes.
Okay, um, we will go into closed session as usual, close with all and B, and we will um be back then.
It may take a while. We go. Moment. Your your amount of what you have for maximum value is thirty-six percent. I asked what it is for this last year.
Yeah.
Well, it's, here's the total S and B this.
Back in session at eight oh nine? PM. The board has sought legal counsel and is awaiting additional legal clarification at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Discussion on the appointment will be on the agenda. With that, the managers' report, please.
All right. All right. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a couple of things, just really quick. If you get a chance to drive out there, Nixon Road is um pretty well complete between Mount Hope and St. Joe. They do not have the bike lane markings. Um, but the rest of the pavement markings are on there, so it looks nice. Um, something I put in my manager's minute, I believe, last week, but just wanted to call out and really commend our assessing department um because they just received their uh audit was required by Public Act six sixty of twenty eighteen um and uh received perfect audit findings uh so, which is pretty rare. So a great, great job by um Ted Droste and Brian Thalen and Joe Pauly are are three folks in the assessing office.
Brian, I'm just curious, who does the audit? Is it the state treasurer or?
Uh, it's the State Tax Commission, but they had, they actually had Reason Consulting um completed the audit on behalf of the State Tax Commission.
Okay, but it's a state audit. That's, I was curious. Okay.
Yes. Um, and then at last meeting, we had some public comment regarding the short-term rental on Ordel Road, so we do plan to bring that back at a future meeting, so. And that's it. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, can I just bring up, and I know you had it in your um um managers um news report that went out, but I didn't know if I missed it before. And I may have, and I apologize, but I know um the chief's kind of farewell retirement party is this
Oh, Friday.
Right, yeah, and I
Three of five.
But I for whatever reason didn't have it on the calendar, but I caught that in the newsletter and so I was uh put that on there, but I didn't know if others missed that too.
No, I saw it. Cause I'm back from Macanau Island. Oh, coming back. Coming back. I saw that today.
Yeah, it was it was kind of planned by the department.
Yeah.
So uh but it'll be at Station One if you do happen to get back in time to.
Anything else? I'll be there. I'll represent. Ford.
I'm trying to go by before then.
Well.
Is he back? Is he still on vacation?
I think he's still on vacation till later this week.
Um, any um
Cautioning him to return.
Additional comments?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, the board members are aware, uh, we all received a an email maligning a board member. Uh, it was a um untraceable email uh from a encrypted um source and it had a domain name of ME, which is from Macedonia. Um, and encryption is from Proton, which even on their own website, they use an example email of using the same domain name of Macedonia. Um, this is the second time that the board has received, to my knowledge, um, yeah, untraceable uh emails maligning a board member. So I attribute uh the fact that we can recognize this to Dave Marquette's uh training that we have in identifying malicious emails. Um, I think this is a basically a foreign actor that's doing this. But my question to Brian, and I don't expect an answer necessarily tonight, but isn't there a way that our firewall can uh block these type of emails, you know, from encrypted sites? Can you check that out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that'd be good. So I appreciate that. So we don't have to be subjected to these types of emails in the future. I know we have hundreds of thousands that are blocked on a daily basis, so uh whatever the logarithm uh can be uh adjusted, you know, to include encrypted websites because if they're sent through that means it's obviously it's uh they have malicious intent and they're not uh there to to produce a positive um input at all. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good question on that, and I apologize. This is just kind of showing a little bit my ignorance on the technical side. Um, is there any circumstance where there might be a legitimate email from an encrypted site? I mean, some people choose to use encrypted. I I don't want to just assume that, and some people do for protections from other, I I I don't, I I just want to be clear on that so we don't have a broad policy.
If I can respond, if you're using an encrypted site, it's so you can't be traced.
Okay.
So you may use another person's name. You may, in this case, this was a former attorney of a
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
personality that we know.
Yes.
Uh, but um who's in federal prison, by the way.
Yeah.
So so my point is, if they're using an encrypted site for an email, it's because they don't want to be tracked. And if we have it's like in an anonymous letter. Okay, and you you know, we can't make policy decisions on anonymous input.
I understand that, but there may be someone, and and going email aside and encrypted websites aside, there are times where we could receive communications anonymously because a person is aware of something but doesn't want to bring it up. And I'm saying, and and I don't know if we should carte blanche, say, we never consider, and I think we had a little bit of discussion about um some anonymous letters and whether or not that warrants discussion, and I think we need to evaluate that. My only concern was, do we take a position that I, and the only reason I ask, I know there are people that for very legitimate reasons use Slack um And things that, you know, for communications that are in there encrypted. And it's not anything malicious. It's not criminal. It is just a protected form of electronic communication. So that's why I was asking. I'm not saying anything particular about uh this correspondence that was sent. But I I am just questioning, is there a reason? And and there may not be. I I just, I don't know. I'm not a.
Discussion on that from a policy point of view, but.
Appreciate like Dave's thoughts on that, like, is there a reason that might not, like, is there any legitimate?
Then I would also ask, you know, what is the other criteria that are used to uh firewall every other malicious uh type of. You know, phishing type of um emails that we get by the tens of thousands every day. So, so, you know, uh, this, this could be just one of those types of things that.
Fair enough.
Isn't there? So but we always already use criteria to firewall these other ones, you know. Many numerous, you know, uh, on a daily basis, so um. And those are, I don't think anybody would argue that they're basically malicious in nature. So.
Good, anybody else?